All rise. The Honorable Chief Justice and Associate Justices of the Supreme Court of North Carolina. Yes, oh yes, oh yes, the Supreme Court of North Carolina has resumed sitting for the dispatch of business. God save the state and this honorable word.
Good morning. Our next case is Ash County, North Carolina versus Ash County Planning Board and Appalachian Materials LLC. I'll note that Justice Berger is recused on this case, and we'll hear from the appellate.
May it please the court, my name is Craig Justice, and I'm with the Van Winkle Law Firm, part of the Buncombe County Bar. I'm here on behalf of the respondent, appellant Appalachian Materials. This court has said on multiple occasion that one of the main purposes of our forming of government is the preservation of property. And property in this state includes the right to use and enjoy your land, or land that you have leased. And this right is a natural right. It's inherent in all of our citizens. It's a right that's protected by our Constitution. It is not a right that is dependent upon the government giving you something, giving you permission. It is inherent in all of us. The laws that are at stake in this case are primarily statutory. They are general statutes 143, 755, and general statutes 160D, 108. These laws are an effort of our General Assembly to announce a public policy that would be binding on everyone in the state, including all the local governments, of an effort to protect and preserve property rights. The General Assembly in those statutes has indicated that a property owner would have a right to rely on the development rules in place at the time of an application being submitted for development approval. As we all know, the development road, especially in today's modern world, is a very steep mountain. And that's before you even get into governmental intervention. Property owners and developers have to go through lending requirements after procure investors' funding, have to come up with a product that would be satisfactory to consumers. It is a steep slope even without government involvement. The government should, in this case, act as an escalator assisting citizens to get up that hill, not as a treadmill. And in this case, this is a poster child for where the government has in fact impaired the ability of property owner, in this case, to be able to develop and use their property. The statutes that are at play here are meant to benefit all citizens, whether they're small businesses or large corporations. We depend a lot on our small businesses for housing, for products that we all use, and in this case includes asphalt. And invariably, it's a case where folks, once they became aware of an asphalt plant, said, "Well, we may need asphalt, but we'd like for it to be produced in another county." So what we have here, just starting with the facts, is on June 5th of 2015, my client submitted an application for the only ordinance, local ordinance, that stood in his way to getting to the top of the mountain. And that local ordinance required only, as part of the application process, that a fee be paid. And it's very important to denote this, that point. The ordinance, which is the rule of law at the local level, did not explain a process or procedures for filing an application. It did not mandate any particular form. There actually wasn't an application form. It didn't say, "The application shall contain X, Y, and Z." All the ordinance required is that a fee be paid. The fee was paid contemporaneous with the submittal of the plans accepted and cashed. The planning board, who is the agency that found the facts in this case, their finding of fact number one was on June 5th, my client applied for a development approval.
I want to interrupt here, because we're pretty familiar with the facts, and you're getting to something I have a question about, so I want to ask you.
Yes, sir.
When we're talking about, because I think you're getting to this, but it seems to me the real heart of the case is a statutory construction question about when we say the word "submit an application," which of the two competing approaches of the Court of Appeals is correct? The one that says, "That just means you submit it, you don't have to ask, like, did you check all the boxes?" Or the other approach that says, "That means a complete application." And I'm just trying to imagine in other scenarios, in ordinary usage, but the question I have for you first is, do you think the municipality has some obligation to describe, to comply with the statute, what a completed application is, or what an application is, or anything? Or does the statute itself, do we just take some ordinary meaning from that, and it doesn't matter whether different municipalities have different rules about how you submit it, what all has to be included, and so on?
I would say, because it's a statewide policy, and it's meant to be preemptive of local government saying, "No, we want to now impose new regulations." There needs to be a uniform, clear standard applicable to everybody from Murphy to Mania to Raleigh to Asheville to Wilmington. So it's incumbent upon this court to give direction of what it means. We have said that what it means, at most, is that you make a request in writing, and you supply information that opens the gate for the local government to then evaluate the substance standards they have. That's it. It doesn't have to be perfect. It doesn't have to give all the information at that time to be permit-ready for issuance, or otherwise that language would have been employed. And one of the key points, the arguments we point out with, is this statute applies to all permits, whether it's a zoning permit, or whether it's what's called a special-use permit. These permits have various ranges of processes before they get issued, but yet the statute applies to all of them, which means that the gate to get to being vested has to be uniform and apply the same regardless of what permit we're talking about. The conditional use or special-use permit's a great example. We've listed a number of cases that this court has dealt with in that scenario, where you don't know you're going to get a permit until you go through multiple committees. Woodhouse is one case, PHG is another case. You go through multiple levels of committee review, technical review committee, design review committee, planning board, and then ultimately maybe a town council. And all the way, you're receiving comment and evaluation. And all the way, you should be looking to modify your plans to address comments, and to address concerns, to clarify things. And you ultimately are not, you don't get the permit till you go through a hearing, and you have traffic engineers show up, and appraisers show up, and you provide proof at a hearing. It's only then that you get the permit. If somewhere along that long journey, the government can just say, "Moratorium, we're changing the rules," it would defeat the public policy set by our General Assembly.
Well, that gets at what, because to me, the planning director's statement, which I'm going to paraphrase it a little bit, but essentially, you know, "We've got your application, you know, get in this one final piece of information, but we're going to, you know, we'll definitely be issuing the permit," is such a useful fact for you if the government has any control over what is the completed application. But I'm just wondering if the statute itself, if that's sort of self-contained, because I think an argument we're going to hear from your friend is, you know, "This application is missing crucial pieces." And we would say, "You submit the application, it's got to be one where you got all your ducks in a row, and if you don't have the permit, one of the permits that you need, you haven't actually submitted the complete application." So what?
Yes.
Do we, can we look to what that municipality thinks about whether it's a, the application has been submitted to answer the question, or is there some statutory rule that we have to use there regardless of what anyone else thinks?
No, I think there's a difference between a procedural rule that can be set by ordinance or a substantive rule that deals with evaluating an application. If you're saying, "Can the local governments come up with procedural rules?" The answer is yes. The first thing they have to do is adopt it per an ordinance. That's the only way it makes it a rule of law, right? We're all subject to the law of our land. We need it to be a law, so that a planning staff member, intentionally or otherwise, doesn't just say, "Well, today, I'm going to require X, just because I said so." And so it needs to be in an ordinance. Ash County did not have an ordinance that set procedural requirements for what is an application. If, obviously, the local government can't do things to impair the General Assembly's will that an application is the only thing required. So if they said, "Well, for you to have a complete application, you need to get five permits that have different standards reviewed by different agencies, where someone can appeal those permits at any time, and it becomes this self-defeating circle of never being vested," that would impair it. So if they said, "By ordinance, you shall submit an application, the application shall contain da-da-da-da, and it will be on such-and-such form." Every day, we go through and we fill out applications. We fill out applications for banks that give us a form for a loan, marriage license, driver license, all kinds of licenses, business license. We fill out a form, we pay a fee. That's what we all understand as the common understanding of an application. So if a local government says, "We shall, by ordinance, say, this application form is the form, and it shall contain a set of plans." For example, if it wants to say, "It shall include a site plan that shows the employees' bathrooms," which is what my friend over here suggested we lacked, then the ordinance needs to say that, because that gate is an objective standard. It's non-discretionary, it shouldn't be subject. If you look at 160D 403, I'm sorry, 402, it lists there as the duties of administrative staff is determine whether an application is complete. And one of our main points is, it then goes on to say, "Then the staff evaluates it for the standards, and then ultimately decides, in a zoning permit case, whether to issue a permit." So the step of, "Is the application sufficient enough to begin evaluation," is a separate step. It is assigned to administrative staff by 160D 402. Because it's assigned to administrative staff, it is a non-discretionary step that must have objective standards set out in an ordinance.
Can I just, I want to, what you're just saying now, and answer this question, to me, sounds different from what you said a minute ago about the intent of the General Assembly, and I'm just trying to understand what your position is with regard to how we interpret this state statute. Because you said initially, I thought I heard you say, and so, please correct me if I'm wrong, that there should be a universal, across-the-state definition of when an application has been submitted. But, and then my follow, if that's what you meant, my follow-up question would be, where do we get that as an intent of the General Assembly from the statute? But what I hear you say now is, you know, each county can set, you know, what they need for a submission, and it, there seems to me to be some logic that certain counties might have different requirements than other counties based on the rural or urban nature, the type of development in their county, you know, there's reasons why there's variations across this large state. And so if it's, if it's the second point, that is that the county, and I hear you, that it needs to be by ordinance, but if the county decides what needs to be submitted so that then you can evaluate whether an application has in fact been submitted, then isn't it possible it would be different in different places?
The application form in and of itself may be different, Justice Earl, but this court to say, when it says, "Submit an application," by the plain meaning of that, an application is simply a form. It's a form that's set by ordinance that must be submitted. And the importance of vesting is, the developer needs to have control over what happens in order to get to that vesting point. That vesting point can't be dependent upon all these subsequent proceedings, and, you know, at some point, you get your permit ready. It needs to be an objective standard that's within the control of the property owner, because otherwise, local government, intentionally or not, might thwart the will. And so what I'm saying is, if this court simply says, "An application, by its plain language, is a form prescribed by ordinance that starts, is submitted to start the evaluation process." If Ash County wants to have a form that's one page, that's fine, but at the end of the day, it's the property owner can see that form and see what's required, and before they announce, "Here I am with a potential controversial thing," they will know, "Here's the form, here's what's required, it's all objective, I might have to spend $100,000 to accomplish submittal of this form, I might have to spend $10,000." But at the end of the day, if the local government wants to say, "The form needs to be five pages," or "The form needs to be three pages, and it needs to require X, Y, and Z," again, that what the form contains can be decided at the local level. Again, it must be something prescribed by ordinance. Here, again, the ordinance simply says, "Pay a fee." And ultimately, you know, when the project representative meets with the planner, Mr. Stub, Stump, and goes over the plans, and everything is fine, and the planner responds multiple occasions, "Everything's in compliance, you just need to get to this state permit, we'll hold your local permit until you get that." Everything is working perfectly fine until opposition shows up, and you're, this court has faced a number of cases, and most zoning cases are about someone opposed to development. It happens all the time. But at the end of the day, this statute is meant to protect the minority, the developer, the property owner, from a majority of people screaming out, saying, "These rules are not adequate to protect me." And it's ironic that in Ash County, these rules had been on the books. If you look at the case they cite from Ash County, there's a Triad Asphalt Company case versus Ash County, you can see that these rules were on the books for over a decade. And here we go with what we believe to be sufficient to start the evaluation process, and then suddenly the population says, "It's not good enough to protect us, now change them." The statute was meant to address this very kind of case. Our Constitution was set up to protect the property owner in this very case. So in terms of the other arguments of why the application is what it is, is if you look in 160D 108A, the General Assembly has said, acknowledged, that to get to a certain point, a property owner's going to have to spend a lot of money and a lot of effort and a lot of sweat equity to get to a certain point, and it's because of that sweat equity and that money that's spent, we're going to protect them so that the rules don't shift after all of those expenditures. It's not when the thing is permit-ready. If the, if the matter was permit-ready, then guess what? The law requires the permit to be issued. And there would be no reason for the General Assembly to acknowledge all the money that's spent in today's modern society to get to a certain point. And right there in 160DB is the permit choice rule that follows all of those objectives, to give a certainty to property owners after they have to take the rules, fill out the application, and spend a lot of money just to submit an application for compliance and for evaluation. And again, the, if the standard was permit-ready, you would not have a situation where there would be equal protection under the law. And I say that because if the standard was permit-ready, permit-ready in a special-use context may mean 4,000 hurdles, a public hearing, and you never know when something may be issued until you get through this long road of public hearing and opposition and experts and whatever. And quite frankly, if it was permit-ready, we cited to a case in Pennsylvania where it seems to me, like the case in Pennsylvania, the Lehigh case, was an asphalt case, the zoning board would just simply make a decision, "Well, you didn't provide us enough information from your traffic engineer, we're going to say it's incomplete," and just deny you on procedural grounds and not even get to the substance.
So my understanding, I want to make sure I understand your argument, that in your view, the question is not whether there's a completed application in the sense of, everything's here leaving no discretion to do anything but issue a permit, but your view is, what has happened is, an application has to be submitted, but that in your view, it would be possible for municipalities to have rules, which I think you said likely be an ordinance that says, "Here's what you have to do in order to submit an application, and if you didn't do those things, they could reject it, and we wouldn't be here, you know, arguing the, you know, the sort of thing in a case where you didn't check all the boxes." But your point is, there were no rules like that here. You paid $500, they kept the money. You had everything except the permit that they have no control over. And you have the planning director saying, you know, "Looks good, well, we expect to be issuing it, just get that permit." And you're saying, "So in this case, your client wins, it's possible, looking at this, that municipalities may say, 'Well, we need to make some more rules. We don't want people rushing in, kind of paying some money and giving us a really incomplete application, and then saying we can't make any more changes to our ordinances.'" So is this, the way I just described it to you, do you think that's a principle that you could agree to? Or do you think there's actually, that they shouldn't be monkeying around at the municipal level with what's a completed application?
This is fact-specific in some way, in that the ordinance said what it said, and it said, "Pay a fee." Okay? And you're right. The planning director's comments to us, to the county manager, to the newspaper, all before the controversy hit the fan, was, "Everything's fine, we just need the state permit to get your local permit." That was all that we needed, to be vested under the law. And there's nothing, once vested, once you've filed enough to get the gate open to start the evaluation process, nothing precludes supplementation and modification of plans. This court in Northwestern versus Gaston County informs us that, that you can still be vested with an application submittal even if you modify the plan, or do something to revise the plan. Or, for example, if you leave out a setback on one of the property lines, that the planner goes, "You left off a setback," that you could go, "You're right, let me fix that." Because it's a, it's part of the give-and-take. It's part of the, being an escalator government, of working with them to get you to the goal. And it's normal to have give-and-take without being kicked out of the line of vesting. It's normal. The Woodleaf case is an example of another case about that.
So I'm wondering if part of your reluctance in that question is that the risk, that suppose in a case like this, you have some municipality that says, "You have to get the state permits and federal permits and whatever else might be required." You have to go do all of those things first, and then we'll accept your application, try to submit anything before then, we won't even take it. And then they could monitor the filings for the state applications, and when they see, you know, an air quality permit or whatever it might be come in, say, "Oh, boy, there's an application coming quick, change the ordinance." And that could potentially frustrate what it seems to me is the intent of the statute. So is that, is that why you're reluctant to say, "Make whatever rules you want?"
Correct. I think having to obtain a permit from another agency is not a procedural thing as much as maybe a substantive thing. And at the end of the day, there is the Washington case we cited, the West Main case, where the city in the West Main case did the same, did the very same thing that you just said, which is they made an application completely dependent upon you running out and getting a bunch of permits with its own review processes, potential appeal processes, and it was just a self-defeating prophecy. Like here, the moratorium public hearing was October 5th, October 6th with the public hearing on the DEQ permit. So they were lining up their public hearings to stop this project with the DEQ's public hearing. So yes, I'm concerned about that, that some, a local government might do that. And I do believe that would be impairing the will of the General Assembly if they did do that. Because the local standard shouldn't matter about, well, what does the state say about the standards that they're following before we would speak? And you're going to get into a catch-22 where a lot of state permits are dependent upon local permits. An outdoor advertising permit is dependent upon a local permit. Mining permits, a quarry permit, air quality permits are dependent upon a local government giving a determination of compliance. So we might get into a never-ending wheel of never-being-vested situation. I am concerned about that. But I think at the end of the day, if this court says, "Look, if you have your local standards that you want to come up with, and you want to come up with an application that says you need to submit X, Y, and Z," not that it's permit-ready, but that it gives us a chance to start the evaluation, then that should be the standard. Obviously, the General Assembly has thought in 160D 402 that the completeness determination made by zoning staff is going to occur at the beginning of the process, and it has to be objective. That means they should be communicating to the applicant. You said, does the, I think you asked the question, "Does a planner have a duty and responsibility?" I say yes. We cited to a Pennsylvania case on a memorandum of additional authorities, case on point, where the planner went silent and allowed the rules to change and didn't tell the applicant, "Oh, your application may have some bugs in it." And the court there says, "There's a responsibility to have that conversation and give them the opportunity to fix whatever deficiency you might think exists in the application." Again, government should be an escalator, not a treadmill.
I just want to make sure I understand your view of the significance of our prior decision in this case, where we said that this June 22nd, 2015 letter was, where the planning director said, "Everything's complete, you just need the final approval permit from the state." We said there, "That letter is not entitled to preclusive effect." Isn't, isn't the strongest, or isn't where we are now, looking at what the planning board decided, and whether there was sufficient fact, because the planning board ultimately concluded that the permit was sufficiently complete? Am I wrong about that?
You are excellently, excellently right about that. That is, it is, and my friend here talks about, "Well, let's focus on what the planning director had." Well, let's look at the emails of the planning director, see what really he had, but at the end of the day, what did the planning board have? Because the planning board was the de novo body evidentiary hearing to say, "Should the permit be issued?" And so the facts were presented, and they made the facts, the facts were undisputed in this case, and they drew a conclusion, Justice Earl, to your point, that the vesting laws triggered, because there was sufficient information at the June application to review the application for compliance, which the planner did. And so while that letter may not be conclusive, it is a bit of evidence, right, still evidence, that they knew that they had enough information to evaluate, that this later enacted, "Oh, we don't have a site plan, we don't have all these things." The planner never said that. The planner had plenty of information to evaluate. And guess what? Again, the ordinance didn't say, "You must do X, Y, and Z." So shame on Ash County for not saying, "You must have X, Y, and Z." And that's okay, they didn't say that. But at the end of the day, to now say, "You had to have a site plan that showed the employee bathrooms," that's, that's the problem, and that's why we need this court to protect these rights that my client had, and to in fact protect what the General Assembly said, "This is the public policy that applies to all of the state."
Am I correct in thinking that you would, you would say, number one, you say that the ordinance, the PID ordinance, didn't require the submission of the state permit along with the application? But number two, even if it did require that, you would say, "That's beyond what you can require merely to submit an application."
I would say, in that context, that would run afoul of, of an application that's within the control of the applicant, to say, "You must run a marathon that everybody will know that you exist before you come in here and get this permit." 160D 403 says, "Local government permits can be issued, subject to the condition of getting all state and local permits." That's what it says. And that's, and so you shouldn't set up an ordinance that will defeat the ability to vest. Thankfully, we don't have that case.
Did you intend to leave some rebuttal, Tom?
Yes, sir, I do. I will stop. Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel. We'll hear from the appellate. Thank you, counsel. We'll hear from the appellate.
Chief Justice Newby, and Associate Justices, I'm John Cook. Along with Mr. Curtis, I represent Ash County. For now, nearly, well, actually over seven years, the duly-elected representatives of the people of Ash County have been contending that the trial court ordering the county to issue a permit in this case was error. Context matters. Ash County is a rural mountain county. It has no zoning. It has very few regulations. It has a planning department of two people, one of whom is an inspector. Its planning board, with little regulations, has little to do and no or little experience in appeals. The view of the commissioners is at the close of the hearing, after the county had afforded every opportunity to this, to this applicant to complete its application, it didn't meet the standards of the ordinance. The ordinance is very simple. Its plain purpose, its plain requirement, is that you, if you want to have a polluting industry, you are to design your polluting industry and show that design such that it has a protective buffer of a thousand feet from all dwellings and commercial buildings. If you look at the record of the hearing, their own exhibits, record page 937, is the statement from the planning director as a suggestion, submit a site plan showing the development. This is in June of 2015. They submit, in their exhibits, their watershed application, which he said, I think you should have a site plan. It does not contain a site plan showing the development. Secondly...
Can, can you comment on, when is an application submitted?
Yes, Your Honor. And what's important is to look at the language of our General Assembly on that, and not somebody's theories. If you look at what the Court of Appeals did in this case, they clar, they, they carefully hewed their decision to your remand. And the issue before them was the argument that was made, that a moratorium was a change in the development standard. That was the issue. And they only had to look at one sentence. That's the moratorium sentence. And if you look at the moratorium sentence, answers Your Honor's question, and that's why I'm getting there. Your Honor, give me a second. It says, notwithstanding the foregoing...
Sorry, what statute are you?
That statute is 160, 160D 108. And that statute says, if I can find it in my notes, notwithstanding the foregoing, if a complete application, this is the language of our General Assembly, for development approval has been submitted prior to the effective date of the moratorium, 160D 108B applies when permit processing resumes. Answers two questions. When you raised the question that was raised in this case, the General Assembly has squarely said, it must be complete. It also says, because it must be complete, the permit processing has already begun. Not application processing, our General Assembly said permit processing. Because our General Assembly adopts moratoriums too. They understand the big delay between when they start that process and when it's actually adopted. And they're trying to cut out speculators and placeholders. So...
The statute, statutory provision that you just quoted, though, if you had a scenario where a developer comes in and pays a filing fee and submits an application, because they've looked at an ordinance, the current ordinance said, I'm entitled to a permit. And then, soon as they file it, they don't have their, uh, state, let's say, air quality permits yet, but, uh, they've gone ahead and filed with the municipality. And then, the municipality changes the ordinance in the way that the, that they can no longer get permission for the development based on their application. So we have a statute that says, we'll let you, the developer, choose between the two. In that scenario, if there's no moratorium involved, does the provision that you just cited apply?
No.
But, and isn't your argument, your friend is making, that that's the provisions that we should be using and not the one that you just quoted? So I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 no. I, I apologize. For Ash County, this is a case about the discrete facts in this case, and not other matters. If there was no moratorium, and if the government had changed the regulations, these are the two requirements, then you would turn to 143 755, which the Court of Appeals did not need to do in this case. That's my point. They did what you asked them to do. But if you do, in that statute, our General Assembly has said, the buildings, improvements, and land shown in the application, it's got nothing to do with process. Process is not relevant here. That's what they said. And let me say why, if I might. The General Assembly has a 360-degree view of all property interests, not just applicants. If you file an application and you show the land, the improvements and structures you want the government to approve, and they change the rules on you, that's unfair. But if you file an application that doesn't show the land, buildings, and improvements, and structures that you want them to approve, no, none of the people around you have any clue what's going to happen. And that's unfair. Because they could wait six months before they ever even respond to the government under that statute. Everybody's property rights count. Despite their argument on page 80, that permit choice is to create a protected class of developers, that is not correct. The General Assembly particularly put that in there. You have to identify the permit, and you have to identify the land, the structures, and I think it's, buildings, structures, and land, I think is the exact language. And that makes it concrete and definite, because everybody knows what's going on. And again, if you turn to Northwestern, I did a word search of Northwestern. Court used the word "plan" or "plans" 90 times. There was a plan that was submitted, that's whole, the whole thing about Northwestern. It was a, uh, a, 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 a mobile home subdivision. They divided lots, they had roads, they had a plan for water and sewer. You have none of that here. And the Court of Appeals correctly understood the specific provision in this ordinance that says, don't start permit processing until the state issues a permit. Federal. Because with polluting industries, unlike residential and other uses, you can't have a polluting industry anywhere without a state permit. So it's a matter of a small staff making sure they don't get ahead of what the state determinations are. And in this case, specifically, until the DEQ inaccurate permit was submitted to the county, nothing had been located on the ground in Ash County. And furthermore, to, to be clear about this point, when the planning director receives an incomplete application, there's no requirement in Ash County that you file a complete application. You can file anything. It's an incomplete application. What was expected in a rural county is that you work with people. And so he did work with people. He worked with them, he tried to make suggestions the whole time. He told them over and over again, your application's not complete. Told them that in Au- August, before the moratorium was adopted. He told them again in September. And then, they changed the whole dynamics. They brought the lawyer in. February 29, 2016, write that date down. That was an aggressive letter to a, a staff person with little and no discretion. Says, by the way, that friendly letter you wrote, you bound the county. You must issue the permit. And they never said that to him when he was writing that letter. And by the way, permit choices, you can't change the rules on me. And if you don't send, you don't issue my permit immediately, I'm going to sue the county. The General Assembly says in 108, they want to foster cooperation. If you, if you encourage that, you won't have cooperation, because cooperation's dissolve. You know what the first call of the planning director is? County attorney. What am I going to do? And so everything gets slowed, and then the litigation picks up. And then they take two days of the planning director's deposition in the litigation.
What about Judge, what about the point made by Judge Dillon, uh, in his dissent, that, um, unlike the moratorium statute, which uses the phrase "complete application", the, the word "complete" isn't in the, the choice of ordinance provision. Obviously, the General Assembly could have put the word "complete" in there, but it didn't. Why shouldn't we regard that as significant?
Well, I think it's significant, because they did use the word "complete". And I think it's significant because they use the following language of permit processing in the same sentence, to signal that the permit application must be complete, ready to make final determination to issue a permit. That's the sentence there. They didn't have to put "complete" in 143 755, because it wasn't in the context of a moratorium. And secondly, because they had the language of buildings, structures, and, um, and, and land that's devoted to the, to the permit, uh, that you're seeking. And so, the Court of Appeals really didn't even have to get to 143 755, but if, and they want to expand it. But, again, keep in mind, they got the benefit of permit choice in this case. The ordinance that was applied by the planning director and by the planning board was the ordinance that was adopted. This is all a hypothetical question. I don't know how you're going to change, how, how that matters in this case, other than their new argument, that if they're wrong, then, then the planning board errands, should provide the new ordinance. And they couldn't meet that either. Our point is a much simpler one. They had a full hearing, they asked the planning director days and days of questions, and they came in, and their own exhibits show, they don't have any design of components that are, of the, of the polluting industry, that are with, that, that, that shows that there is a thousand-foot buffer. And so, nobody knows. And furthermore, the fact that that floating blob, which they call plant site limits, which is a term that doesn't exist in the ordinance, testimony was, and they admitted, that their polluting industry road, which is not within the blob, is scaled off to be within a thousand feet of a residence. So at the end of the close of the hearing, back to Justice Earl's point, it's a legal question. Does this application, which has never been amended to correct any of the inaccuracies either, does it satisfy the ordinance? And from the commissioner's perspective, the plain purpose of this ordinance was for you to design your polluting industry and show the design to the county and to the people of Ash County. That verifies that they in fact have a thousand-foot buffer from all dwellings and, uh, commercial buildings. I'd like to turn to that question of commercial buildings, if I, if I might. Again, context matters. If you look at the ordinance, I think it starts in maybe 2038. The, the commissioners have narrowed the scope of this ordinance to a very precise part of the county. It does not apply to the incorporated areas. It does not apply to the ETJ areas. This is a rural county. The ordinance only applies to the ruleless part of this rural county. And the ruleless part of this rural county's draw for citizens is a quiet and peaceful living environment. Hence, the reason for this ordinance. And when you look at the buildings, the commercial buildings, the barn and the weigh station, I would submit to you, they look just like all kinds of buildings in rural North Carolina across our state. This whole notion that they don't look good, or they're not this, and they're not that, that is not what the commissioners intended. The whole argument that a barn, an agricultural barn, is not protected by this ordinance would mean that the vast area of the, area of the ord, of the, that the commissioners intended to be protected would no longer be protected. They use...
See the, the thing, particularly for the residents of a county like yours, to think of barns and, you know, these agricultural operations as being locations of commercial activity, just seems odd. It's not how ordinary people would describe a farming operation.
Well, I think...
So you can see the tension there, right? That that's not really what the ordinary meaning of that word means.
Respectfully, I don't, but I will, I will try to address it, and that, and that is this. We who live in urban areas kind of forget how things are in the rural areas. If you have a agricultural operation, nobody thinks that's just a avocation, a hobby. I think that's a commercial enterprise. And so the commissioners picked and intentionally did not define, to limit, commercial buildings. They picked the most general term in the world that they could find, because their goal was not to draw a distinction between citizens who might work in what some people might think are a commercial enterprise, and other commercial enterprises. They kept it very general. And we cite some old cases that...
I guess what I was getting at is that, to me, that farmers would think of themselves as producers, and that the commercial activity would happen when they take their, their, what they produce to market. That, that's where the commerce would happen. And they wouldn't think of their own farm as being a place where the commerce is happening. That's where they're producing the thing that will go into that stream of commerce.
If, if this was a zoning ordinance, Your Honor, we'd be spot-on with that. But the purpose of this ordinance is to protect citizens where they regularly live and work, and does not draw those kinds of distinctions. So people are working in the barn, and that is in the testimony, in this, and undisputed. So, the only way to have it uniform, like, we cite an old case of involving a, a stable, where the stable owner said, well, my house is within the, the protective buffer, and it can't apply. And the court said, it has to be uniform. You can't draw that distinction. I can't draw the distinction between somebody who works in a commercial enterprise, that has customers coming to it, versus people who, who work in enterprise that don't have customers coming to it. That, that, that is not what the...
Why shouldn't we allow the local planning board to define these terms that are not otherwise defined until such time as there's an ordinance to define those terms?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear your, your question, Your Honor.
Why shouldn't we allow the local planning board to define these terms until such time as there may be an ordinance to give more specificity? In other words, you have a, a group of local folks who have been tasked to apply, uh, these ordinances... ordinances, and why shouldn't we rely on the planning board to do that?
Thank you. That's a great segue to answer your question and another point. The legal standard here for the planning board, page 135 of their brief, they cited it, is in Ray Ray Construction, where this court said, the planning board has no authority to amend the ordinance, has no authority to allow a use that's not permitted by the ordinance. So to answer your question, they can't amend the ordinance. They can't define it.
But, well, there's a difference between giving meaning to an ambiguous term, we have to do that all the time, versus amending, where obviously you will see different views about, well, are you amending this, or is this truly ambiguous? Why is not the local planning board the proper group to give definition to ambiguous
Well, under 160D 1402, which is the review statute, that's an issue of law and is decided de novo by the court. So Your Honor is absolutely correct. The first question is whether this is ambiguous. The county takes the position it's not, that their intent was clear and obvious. But if it is ambiguous, then it needs to be interpreted as a remedial statute, and it needs to be interpreted to provide for the free use of land. The free use of land being those citizens who are already invested with a dwelling and with a commercial building. So I believe it's a de novo review for Your Honor, and there's no deference to them under the statute.
So what is our standard of review of the planning board's decision?
Well, and as Your Honor knows, when we kind of had this discussion in 2020, all the issues in this case are de novo review because they're issues of law. And so the issues that were remaining to the Court of Appeals were issues of law, subject to the court's de novo review.
So if the planning board says, we think the application is complete, and we think that it is in compliance, why isn't our standard of review to ask whether we do whole record review to say, is there any evidence in the record that supports what the planning board did?
Because the standard of review, when it is de novo, is not whole record.
What makes it, so your position is there's absolutely zero fact finding that the planning board does?
No. The statute's very clear, it's their limited authority. The statute says they have the authority to find contested facts, nothing more. They have the authority of the planning director. They're sitting just like him. At the end of the hearing, the question is, in terms of a permit processing, does this application show that the possible polluting industry has been designed such that there's a thousand-foot protective buffer between dwellings and residential, between dwellings and commercial buildings? And at the end of the hearing, nothing had changed. The only thing that changed was a different DEQ permit. There was nothing that showed the components of the polluting industry. The blob had not been surveyed, hadn't not been located on ground. The ordinance requires actual measurements. There were no actual measurements.
Can I take you back to something you said in answer to the Chief Justice? Did I hear you say, if there is an ambiguity in something like the word "commercial," that your view is the principle that we must construe that ambiguity in favor of the free use of property would mean that we would have to construe it in a way that would preclude the development here of the asphalt plant because it would somehow encumber the barn or the mobile shed or the quarry, the other? Is that what you said?
Yeah. My argument is that there are all sorts of property rights in this matter. And if you, this is not-
But if you said it was ambiguous-
It's not like a zo-, I'm sorry, I apologize, I keep-
No, I'm just trying to say, if we said it was ambiguous, and we said, who's being impacted by the ambiguity right now? It's the applicant for this current permit. And nothing about our ruling here would limit in any way the owner of the barn or the shed, the quarry, although I think that's actually a party in this case, but that would in any way limit how you might develop those properties. So there's nothing, the only person whose property rights are being impacted directly here is the party who can't do with their property what they want in this case, right?
Well, that wouldn't be true if their polluting industry is within a thousand feet of somebody's house or a commercial building, then their rights would be impacted. This is different than zoning where there's a comprehensive plan, and you're not really looking at what is happening on other people's property. The whole purpose of this ordinance is to direct the attention of the polluting industry proposal, which, by the way, any reputable polluting industry is going to have a site plan, and they're going to be happy to share it. That's Robbins, that's S.T. Wooton, that's how it's done. But here, we're not following a comprehensive plan, and we don't have a dizzying array of different regulations, they are all confusing. This has the simplest and plainest purpose, and that is, if you propose a polluting industry, it is your responsibility to be able to get a permit, to show that you've designed it so that there is a thousand-foot buffer between existing dwellings and commercial buildings. And if you don't, then you're not entitled to a permit. And it's really that simple. And because we are protecting specific, already-made investment back interest and expectations, I think if you're going to apply that principle, it should be applied in such a way as either it's neutral, recognizing that they have interest, or favorable to them since they had already made those investments. And that's where they live and where they work.
Before you run out of time, can you comment on, this court said, the parties remain free to argue any legal significance of the letter from the county official. What is the significance, if any, of that letter that seemed to say, well, what you're proposing is approved once you get the final permit?
If the letter has legal significance, it says, without objection, your application's on hold. You don't put an application on hold unless it's incomplete. It also says, survey attached to permit. There's been no actual survey or actual measurements submitted to the county seven years later. So the only reason it was removed from being on hold is because in February 29, 2016, the applicant's lawyer was interjected, who says, I'm entitled to a permit right now in face of the moratorium. And that litigation strategy was successful, and it forced the county to apply the only ordinance that existed, the polluting industry's development ordinance. And it still didn't meet that standard. Therefore, we believe that the Court of Appeals should be affirmed. We rest on our arguments about misrepresentations in the brief, in the application in our brief, since I've got 42 seconds left, to make that argument. But what the county would ask you to do is to firm the Court of Appeals. They carefully followed the issues that you laid out for them. They reasoned them carefully. They made the correct decision under the concrete, discrete facts of this case and under the very simple ordinance that the county commissioners adopted to protect their citizens where they work and where they live in this most rural area of a very rural county. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, counsel. Rebuttal?
The free use of land principle that this court has well understands was turned on its head. It is to protect property owners in developing their property when there's ambiguities, not to protect some rural person far away or whatever. It's to protect the free use of land of the permit applicant developer in this case. And ironically-
Your opposing counsel indicated that we don't need to construe the permit choice statute, statute, because you got your choice of ordinance here, if I understood him correctly. How do you respond to that?
One of the reasons for the permit denial was a reference to the fact that our plans weren't sufficient to trigger the permit choice rules. And then that was dealt with by the planning board. So I'll be honest with you, there's been a lot of noise and a lot of things that are confounding in this case. That argument is one of them. It was a permit denial reason, the planning board said, yes, sufficient to trigger the permit choice rules. If you look in their petition for an assert, they actually say the heavier statute that we, our ordinance we adopted is the one that's applicable. So that's what they said in their petition for an assert. So this idea that the moratoria statute is somehow controlling, to your point, Justice Allen, the permit choice rules don't mention the moratoria statute and actually repeatedly talk about this give and take and evaluation process after an application is submitted. All of that would be defeated somehow if the moratorium statute had primacy. You have to read those statutes harmoniously. If you look at the moratoria statute, just in the very language that's used, the General Assembly recognizes that an application is different than evaluation or permit issuance. With a special use permit, they say to be vested, to avoid the consequences of the temporary moratorium denying a development approval, you just have to get an application that's accepted as complete. As we said earlier, a planning director as part of 160D 402 is to determine that an application is complete before they start evaluation. The fact that "complete" is used in this last sentence is not creating a new standard. It's just simply saying, you've got to turn in an application that is sufficient. It's not creating some new standard. It just means you have to turn in an application that is sufficient. But it doesn't mean that it has to be permit-ready, because otherwise, it would have talked up here about special use permit being issued, not application, because we all know that there's been months and months ahead of that permit applicant to get to a permit issuance-ready stage. There are a number of arguments they make that were not part of the permit denial, not part of the planning board decision-making, and not part of the Court of Appeals decision. That includes the site plan argument that you heard, that includes the access road argument that you've heard. Northwestern is the case, I believe, that's closest on point in this, that you all have decided in the past.
Thank you, counsel. I believe your time's expired.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Mr. Clerk?